Good evening and welcome to the March 2, 2020 Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is going to be a fairly active meeting, very informative to the general public. We're going to be going over the town budget submitted by the town manager. I checked, the meeting was not officially listed as a joint meeting between the Finance Committee and Select Board, but yet I'd like to acknowledge we have the Chair and two members, total of three members of Finance Committee in the room, four, excuse me, four members in the room, so it will proceed to the discussion. I want to let everybody know on the outside who's up here. How about announcements? I'll take, I'll take the last two or you don't?
Sure. Just wanted to, not so much as an announcement, but just some information. Last week was early voting and there were 923 ballots cast. That wasn't our largest turnout yet, but it was also a very condensed timeframe there. So that was, they had a busy week and tomorrow is the state, I'm sorry, the presidential primary. And then just to make sure people are aware, the 2020 census starts their invitation to respond online between March 12th and March 20th. This is separate from the annual town census that's done every year. So there's been a little bit of confusion about that, but the, the national census has not started yet. That will begin March 12th. So just so people are aware, there are two censuses. There are the annual town census that's already happened and the national census, which is starting March 12th. There is a link on the town website under Community on the homepage with some Census 2020 information on there if anyone needs, needs that.
I have a couple announcements too. The Long Meadow Police Department is once again offering the rape aggression defense training, or basic, basic self-defense course for women. Classes, dates are April 6th, 8th, 13th, and 15th, Mondays and Wednesdays, and are held from nine, or from 6 to 9 p.m. at the Police Department and Center School Gym. There is no fee and college and high school girls are encouraged to attend. You can email the Police Department at LPDRAD@longmeadow.org, or you can call the town manager's office to get the information. Another announcement is Tuesday, March 3rd, which I think the town manager just alluded to is primary, our presidential primary election. Voting takes place at Community House. Polls are open from 7 to 8 o'clock. Okay, we'll move on down to Board, Board Committee and vacancy interviews. We have one interview tonight. Michael, would you like to come forward, please?
Sure.
We have a historic commission application.
Sit here?
Yes, please. And if, if you would, your name and address, and then you can go into, tell us why you'd like to be it.
Michael Smith, 39 Converse Street. And we went on the town online and saw the vacancies of different things and, and we moved here from, my wife and I moved here from Newport, Rhode Island, a couple of years ago when we bought a home here and our daughter is in Center School. And basically, the, just was surprised by the amount of history in the city and in the town and whether it's the cemetery areas or the, some of the wildlife areas and the stores and different things. And the more and more we've researched it, the more I've found different, a lot of history here that didn't expect. And so when I saw that vacancy, I thought it would be a good way for me to be a part of the community.
Good, thank you. How about any Select Board members or any of the members up here have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for volunteering.
Oh, thank you.
Anything else?
I was just going to ask if you were, had researched a little bit the difference between the Historical Commission and the Historical District Commission. It's not really a question, just some advice.
I know there's two different ones, but I don't.
We're trying to do a good, we're trying to draw a better distinction between the two, so hopefully it'll help you and help the folks in town.
I did attend a meeting of the commission and, but as far as, they did speak of another entity as well, and so that's all I know.
That's fine, you'll be fine. Thank you.
I'd like to echo what Mark said. Thank you for stepping up the plate. You've been in town two years. There is a vibrant history up here and it's interesting to get into it. There's a lot of wonderful publications that talk about the history of our community.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions to the Board?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. We usually take two weeks for notification, so it'll be not like next meeting, it could be the next meeting or the one after we'll make notifications, okay?
Okay.
And thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Okay. Resident comments. Do we have any resident comments tonight?
None.
Okay. Select Board comments. I have one comment. The reason I'm sitting here is that Marie has taken a couple of days off to relax, so I've been posted to fill in for her in case you're used to seeing her smiling face and you've stuck with me tonight. Select Board comments done, okay. Town managers report?
Here we go. Okay. So I was notified last week that Town Council, Dordie Wallace, Pillsbury, Murphy, has requested a review of the retainer fee. The fee has been in place since 2014 and hasn't had any modifications to it, but the work has been steadily increasing over the last three fiscal years, so they've asked for a meeting to, to take a look at that fee. So I will be asking one member of the Select Board to attend with me and start those conversations. It would be Wednesday or Thursday of this week if someone had time and wanted to sit in on that.
I've got time if you need it.
You sure you have time to talk and trash?
I've got time.
Okay. Do you want to participate?
It really depends on when the meeting is. Do you have the time yet?
I don't. Do you need it after?
Just let me know.
Okay.
Yeah. Mark, Mark, Mark can be the.
Okay. So, moving on. As of 12:01 a.m. on Sunday, March 1st, Captain Fontaine will serve as interim police chief. This appointment's going to continue until the position of the police chief is permanently filled. The process to name a permanent replacement's ongoing and applications have been received. An assessment center has been scheduled. That's sometime the middle of March, so we should be making progress on that permanent appointment in the next few weeks. Coronavirus, I just wanted to provide an update that the town is forming a multidisciplinary task force to monitor the situation and provide information or guidance as it's necessary. The task force is made up of various town departments and staff and will work together to share information and determine if any actions are necessary, what those actions may be, and provide public information. The town's health director and fire chief, who's also the emergency management director, are closely monitoring the guidance being provided from the CDC and Health and Human Services. Westcom, letters of intent to join Westcom have been received from Munson and East Long Meadow. Munson has been formally accepted and is working out a transition plan now, and a vote to accept East Long Meadow will be scheduled and a transition plan will be developed. Every day, there's continuing interest to join Westcom, so it's been pretty positive. And shared health services, I'm working with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to continue to discuss and, to continue to discuss draft and review an intermunicipal agreement between Long Meadow and East Long Meadow to share health services. The meetings have been very productive and I expect to bring forward an agreement for acknowledgement or acceptance in mid-April.
Lynn, just a, I guess a comment and then a question. Comments about the Town Council retainer fee? At some basis, and I don't remember the frequency, I don't remember what it is, we've actually taken another look at law firms and whether we want to just reappoint the current Town Council and where do we want to look around? And I don't know, I'd have to go back to my notes to see when's the last time we did that, but just wanted to let you know that, that there's a, it could be a two-step process. One is to decide that we do want to continue to be represented by Pillsbury or Wallace, Dordie Wallace, Pillsbury, Murphy, or that we want to start looking around. I think that we ought to just, we ought to be aware that it's not necessarily a guaranteed renewal. The, the other thing I guess I was just going to ask about is the, the impact of the expansion of Westcom on the, on the financial obligations of the town and the, and the running of the operation. Clearly, they're going to have to add dispatchers and add equipment and things like that, and I just, I don't need it right now, but I think as, as it moves forward, I think that, that the Board has voted to approve, the Board of Westcom's voted to accept Munson, but I'd just be interested to know what that, how that's impacting the town. I suspect it's positive, but I, I want to make sure that at least we, we understand it as well. So maybe in a, in a future summary about it, you could just include what, what those impacts have been.
Sure.
Be great. Thanks.
Mark, do you have any?
I don't.
I'd like to add one small note on the coronavirus. There's been a lot of news coming out the last couple of days about cautioning people on where they're getting their information on this. Apparently, it's a lot of false articles being put out. There's a lot of phony products being advertised on eBay and on Amazon. They're dropping this stuff off as quick as they detect it, but be aware that you might want to go to national health-recognized sources for your information on this. And I think you're starting to see the local TV channels say the same thing. It's a, be very careful what your sources of information are. There's a lot of panic being spread and some appears to be being spread for profit purposes. Okay. Chair's report. Marie didn't leave me anything and I have nothing to suspend as the chair, so we'll move into old business. I look for approval of some minutes from February 18th, 2020.
I move we approve the minutes of February 18th, 2020, regular Select Board meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Look for a motion for the approval of the minutes on 2/24/2020.
Move we approve the minutes of February 24th, regular Select Board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all approval? Okay, new business. Now we're going to move into highlight of the evening. We're going to have the town manager take over and present the budget along with the CFO.
Can you pass that to Richard? He had asked for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just pull this PowerPoint up. Okay. And for those that want to follow along, this is, this document's available along with all of the budget documents for FY21 on the Select Board Town Manager's website at longmeadow.org/budget. You can find it there, just if you were looking to follow along. So, starting with budget highlights, it's kind of hard to read, so you may want to follow along on your own. So the FY21 Town Manager's budget recommendation is balanced without the use of reserves. The FY2021 budget uses 1.875% of the allowable 2.5% property tax increase under Proposition 2.5, less than the 2% used in FY2020 while fully funding the school committee request and the FY2021 Town Manager's capital plan. Two new positions were added to the DPW, a laborer to help with field maintenance and the anticipated needs of the Wolf Swamp Athletic Fields and the Adult Center, and a custodian for maintenance and cleaning of the new Adult Center building. Two additional firefighter EMTs to meet the increasing demand for services and steady the use of overtime paid from ambulance receipts. Stores Library Budget meets Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners' budgetary funding levels for the first time since FY2009. FY2021 will be the first full fiscal year with Westcom. The FY2021 allocation is $155,000, less than the FY2019 expenses of $210,354, and of that total, it was salaries only. Increase in FY2021 capital allocation of .125%, which equates to $126,246, bringing that up to 3.125, up from 3% in FY20. Some, some challenges in this, in the FY2021 budget include state aid, which is the second largest revenue source for the town, only saw an increase of 2.37%, which is $165,257, much less than the 6.6% we saw in FY2020. 6.6% was $432,814. The reliance on property tax revenue to fund the 81.28% of the general fund budget and the approaching tax ceiling, and the changing recycling market has required the town to add $158,100 to the operating budget to cover the cost of disposal. This chart here, do you want me to get the lights? Is that, would that be easier? This, this chart here is revenues from all funds totaling $77,96,084. As you see on here, property tax is, makes up the bulk of the revenue at $56,089, I'm sorry, $56,189,574. It's about 73%. And then state aid being the next 9% there in that blue, blue sliver. And then the other various funds here, water, enterprise, sewer, solid waste, stormwater, school special revenue, and local receipts. And then FY2021 expenditures from all funds. As you'll see, schools here are 51, 50% at $38,107,247. And then the next largest would be Department of Public Works and the employee benefits are both equal at 14%, $10 million in change, almost 11 million when it's employee benefits. Our available fund balances, free cash, all the way down. The OPEB trust fund we're listing this year, I don't think it was on there last year. These totals are as of January 31st, 2020.
Excuse me, Lynn, when, when we have negative in stormwater retained earnings, what does that indicate? I know the negative numbers, Paul, though.
Basically, that we did, our expenditures, our actual expenditures, not necessarily budgetary expenditures, but actual expenditures exceeded actual revenues by that $3,000 in that first year of operation.
Thank you.
And departmental summary, FY21 over FY20. You'll see, I can go through some of the notable ones. The public safety, the 4.11 increase, that is due to the addition of two firefighter paramedics to steady that overtime and help with the call volume. And the debt service, 8.83, is attributed to the DPW and the Adult Center coming online, or I'm sorry, coming on the debt schedule. And, oh, Public Works, the 2.15, that's related to the two labor, the labor and the custodian increase. So this total general fund budget represents a 2.77% increase over FY2020.
This, this, this presentation wasn't included on the agenda, was it?
It was not. I finished it a couple hours ago, but it's on the website now.
Dripping ink, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
I think for the most part, all that is summarized in the.
Budget message.
In the budget message. It was just kind of a summary of a PowerPoint summary of that.
Great. Now, finance, if you've got any questions, any finance members, if you have a question, come on up to the mic, okay? Don't hesitate. Or you can, you can go from there. I was talking about the other members here that may need to come to a mic.
I think I may already know the answer to this question, but I thought it might be beneficial for folks to hear it. On the Finance Committee is, over the last couple of years, tried to set a goal for the budget to not include a levy increase that goes up to the full 2.5%. And we have, over the course of the last several years, met that goal. This year, we started off with a projection based on a spreadsheet that the Finance Director, CFO helped us prepare. The calling for the budget, excuse me, the levy to not increase more than 1.84%. My understanding is that was based on projected numbers and that the actual numbers have now been plugged into the spreadsheet, which changes the figure to 2.08%, which now this 1.875% levy increase is actually under the projection that the Finance Committee would have been requesting for this fiscal year. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct.
All that is correct, and just to be more specific, the numbers used back in September, when it was last updated prior to this last week or so, were, were the projections for FY20 valuations and new growth and things of that nature. And what we did is we actually inputted the actual amounts that were certified by the Department of Revenue in, into the picture, since they are, they are the actual numbers, actually. So that is what was the factor that changed around that 2 point, I'm sorry, that 1.84 to 2.08. So it was just updated actual numbers.
I wanted to thank Paul and Eileen for, for that work and thank the, the town manager and the Select Board for being able to make that, that goal for the Finance Committee. So, thank you, I appreciate that. We appreciate that.
Hi. A quick question about the capital planning budget. So it looks like it's up to 3.125% of our total revenues.
It's 3% of our total net revenues, yes, yes.
Right. So I know their goal is to increase it a little bit each year. Is there a, a top number?
4%.
4%? So they're going to keep requesting to increase.
Right. The policy as it stands has a, has a ceiling of 4%.
Got it. Thank you.
And that would, we don't have the figures to say how much below that is actually what would be required for town to size. It was what we arbitrarily hoped to get to at that point when we set the policy in place. But we're so vastly underfunded, it was, the figures would scare everybody, nobody, nobody would believe them, so. Go ahead, Mark.
One of the things I think is worth commenting on is the impact on the, on the tax rate, because that's kind of been where we are. I, I was doing the numbers, but in the summary under debt service, talk about a projected, that's what a lot of projections of valuations and et cetera, et cetera, of, of $24.98 as a tax rate, of which $2.39 would be excludable debt-based taxes. So it's a, if you will, a prop two and a half tax base of 2259. How does that compare with your, you know, your 2006 projection, 2010 projection?
When you say 2006 or?
No, no, your prior projections on where our tax rate was going and when we hit the tax ceiling.
Well, yeah, I think it's at 2026, 2025 or 2026, and that's based upon no market growth. So if the market grows favorably, it'll be pushed out further. Should we hit some type of recession and we lose valuation in town, it will be accelerated closer to the current date.
Anyone else?
So I saw that the, the DPW, there's a, an item in there for a new DPW laborer for field maintenance, and we had talked about offline potentially outsourcing those services. I didn't know if there was any discussions with Mario about that. And, and, and the reason being is, is, you know, to kind of minimize our, our exposure to health insurance, OPEB and things of that nature.
We've had some initial conversations about it on landscaping needs, not as much as field maintenance, but more general landscaping, but nothing, we haven't formalized anything yet. This, this person would be able to move around, whereas if we were to put something out to bid for a landscaper, it would probably be just one specific field and not necessarily moving around to other fields. It's something we can definitely evaluate further.
Do we know what the salary is?
I don't.
I think it was 40, 40,000.
Yeah. That sounds about right.
And do we know how much per employee we pay for health insurance or what?
It, it varies, depending on if they choose a family or a single plan. It could range, Marie had me look at some things. The average cost that the town pays for a health insurance product for an employee is $10,500. The Hampton County Retirement Assessment is close to 25%. So if you had a $40,000 employee, you have another $20,000 right there in, in benefits. All the other ones are very minor when it comes to Medicare and things of that nature.
So does it make sense to look at a $60,000 figure in terms of how much that might get us in, in outsourcing?
It, it certainly doesn't hurt to look at it. If you have that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we could certainly look at it. And, you know, the source of funds would be, again, the salaries, so on and so forth for, for a contractor. We just make line item transfers to cover it.
There would likely be some collective bargaining along with it, I would imagine.
Yeah. My, you know, as we've talked about repeatedly, I think these are the types of things we'd start looking at. And like I said, we had talked about it a little bit offline. I mean, if it, if it works, I think we should explore it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but I think we should just look at it.
We're galloping towards that. The, I don't know if you ever hear of A-76? It's something about 20 years ago, I think the government took on, it was a contract, contracting. It was a program and they, they went out and they studied thousands of jobs. There was a lot of them that were farmed out immediately, especially in custodial services, lifeguard services, very different types of things. I mentioned to Lynn, I retired 15 years ago. When I left my last position in Washington DC, I had 100, I had 140 people in a maintenance organization. Right now, they have 65. Everything else has been contracted. So you can't say it can't be done because they've contracted out plumbing, electrical, they've gone all on-call. Major program thrusts are still done by contracting, so, but they, they just invested themselves in the labor situation and the wages and the, the overhead and just reverted back because it was such a massive amount of people available to do the services in the DC area. It was like we were fighting against each other down there having these labor forces. Very similar to what our discussion is, that every town here has all these identical things for regionalization. And sooner or later, you step back and say, why? We're all duplicating everybody. Specifically what you're talking about, though, I don't think Mario has a scope of services developed for a contract document, so at this point, we'd be kind of against it unless we had scope of services going for contract and exactly what we, what we expect to see up there. But I could tell you, a lot of times when you throw, throw a half FTE or three quarters of an FTE, you know, maintenance organization, it's hard to track it because it gets so diluted on the tasks, the daily tasks, unless there's a scope of services made up of what you're going to do at that facility, and then you go back and you mandate that that's being done. That's usually what you end up with a contract document, because that's what the contractor bids on. They don't bid on flipping around, they bid on what the standards are developed for that facility. And we're, we're going that direction. You know we are. We have to go that direction. It's just another couple of years and we'll be there.
Yeah. You know, I, I think that contracting maintenance or field maintenance. Yeah. You know, I think that contracting maintenance or field maintenance, certainly for Wool Swamp Fields, even as an isolated case, would allow us to identify what those all-in costs are as part of our field upgrade, separate from getting diluted in everything else. But what I really wanted to say was, everything Mark Strange just said about field maintenance, I think same ought to be said about the custodial at the new Adult Center. And, you know, I've been here long enough to have gone back and forth and back again, from in-house to, you know, outside contracting. And now, talking about bringing in-house, I've heard all the concerns about having, you know, outside contractors for custodial services. But the cost of the long-term benefits to those folks and the, I'd say, is potentially broader availability of that service in the general community may make that worth looking at as well.
The one part I failed to mention on the A-76 movement, the downfall of it was that, basically, employees were being bid against a contractor. And when the contractor won a service, those employees were displaced. Sometimes they were melted into other organizational elements, but basically their positions were eliminated from the org there. And they actually were competitively bidding against the contractor for their job. So it was quite an exercise to get all this, all I can imagine, all the financial aspects of trying to make sure that our bid was as high as we could possibly get it to defend our own operation against a contractor. So it was an interesting exercise to see take place, and what by government-wide, it was still going on today. Any other statements? Any other statements from Finance? I tell you, I think that's the fastest the Town Manager's ever delivered, a budget. I mean, there's gotta be something missing, Lynn.
I guess the question is, at what point do we, you know, and is tonight the night that we go through and ask some specific questions about some line items, or do you want to hold off doing that?
Marie requested that this be a delivery to the board tonight, and that we absorb and ask some generalized questions instead of getting into the detailed analysis when we'll have a full board. I imagine, Marie, you guys would be in there too when we get the full discussion going. That's what she had recommended, because you've got some simple one-liners, Mark. We've got time.
Well, I have a few, and literally just a couple.
A simple one-liner?
Oh, yeah, I think so. But, you know, more importantly, I think the question for me is things like, you know, how do we hold the line on overtime? I've been an advocate, by the way, for staff up the fire department to cut down on the overtime. Our process of covering for individuals when they're out on fire calls has always been call people in on overtime, so that you don't leave the fire station uncovered when, especially when two ambulances are out. And so having that extra staff has been something that I support. But I think we really need to understand what those all-in costs are. And so that's one of the things that I want to make sure that everybody understands and supports it, because I think that's one of the things that really is a, even though it's contrary to don't hire, it really, it's gonna save our overtime. This is, I think, the second, maybe the third year in a row that we've outspent our overtime line item on fire department. And so we need to do something about it, and primarily it's because of the way we did it. Yeah, if you don't mind, I've got a couple of just highlighted line items that I was just gonna ask about. So maybe we can get those out of the way.
Sure.
Identified the, oh, under school operating expenses, I know there's schools and they're not part of us, but pretty big line item is service agreements, Paul. And I was wondering if we could go back to Tom Mazza and just find out, get a more detailed explanation of what school service agreements is.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go to Tom. We'd probably go to Nick Georgantis, who is the Facilities Director.
It's near the bottom of page seven. That one kind of surprised me. The other thing I was surprised by is a reduction in postage at the Adult Center. And I'm not sure I follow that in the new facility unless we're planning on getting sponsors for postage.
Originally, what happened is they never used that line item over the last couple of years. They never spent out of that line item. It was originally cut. However, $600 was put back into their other expenses for postage.
Thanks.
And that was like the last of our last-minute corrections to the budget. But again, they never used that line item in the past, so it was originally taken out.
And, I don't know how to deal with this, but the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board assessments going up. I mean, we've got that number. It's a good number.
Yes, it's the official notification we got from them with that amount of assessment. And again, I double-checked the numbers. What we actually submitted was for an estimate for FY '20 payroll that's attributable to Hampton County is just a smidgen above what the actual was for FY '19. So I'm comfortable with the number that was submitted. I was just, you know, I don't wanna say it's one of those things, but if other communities are not growing as quickly as us, we end up having a bigger piece of the pie.
The others were some enterprise fund questions. Water Enterprise Fund, there was a pretty big increase in a couple of line items, certainly in terms of percentages. Communications was way up. Utilities, well, purchase of water, I guess that, there's nothing to do about that. But there's also, I guess it was vehicles, vehicle repairs and maintenance, up 37 percent for water. Is that all allocation, or those are actual increases?
For the water, it was increased mainly because, you know, across the board, that I think if you look at the general fund areas in the DPW, all those were increased. I think this one just sticks out because it's a smaller number that was increased, or I can't say a smaller number, but from a smaller number. But there was an increase all across the board based upon actual historical trend of repairs to those vehicles. And I think Mario would probably have to get into more of the details on some of the other questions. So, and even that one.
All right. Two other DPW-related questions. One is, there's funds put in for an intern. And I guess the question is, how are we gonna evaluate the effectiveness or the work of the intern to know that we're, and is that in lieu of a full-time employee, or is that?
Is this in engineering?
Yeah, it's an engineering intern. And why don't we start with that one, then I have another just quick question about the, you can go.
Well, I'll just start with the answer too. I mean, we've had a hard time finding a town engineer. It's basically being manned by somebody in acting capacity. We're probably having, or we are having better luck finding lower-level engineers to do a lot of the grunt work. And that's why they wanted the, an additional intern to get them through the fiscal year. But again, we cannot find, for the salary that we're paying, a town engineer.
That's fine. So in theory, we might not have both an intern and the town engineer. And more importantly, should we not consider with all the engineering firms out there, you know, some towns are starting to contract their engineering services, I'm sure.
I think Mario has explored that.
We do for a lot of, you know, one-off projects.
Okay. Yeah, at some point, we need town engineer. The other thing that surprised me was that there was, didn't appear to be any costs in the DPW budget associated with moving in and operating a new facility. And, you know, the Adult Center clearly, the Adult Department clearly reflected that in their budget, one way or the other. But I just, I'm just amazed that we don't think that there's gonna be some costs. Probably not downward costs, it's probably upward costs, but I'm surprised that it's not in.
You're absolutely right. There is nothing in there at this point in time, or there was nothing requested by the DPW. Maybe we could ask the owner's project manager if there's estimates. It would be a half a year, basically, the time they get in. But maybe we could ask the owner's project manager if there's any type of estimates that we are gonna be so far ahead of what we currently pay.
Yeah, I mean, even if it simply is electricity, or, you know, but I don't think that's it. I think, you know, the expectation is we're gonna keep a new facility at a different level of operations than we did in our current facility. I suspect there can be costs associated with it. I'm not sure what they are, but I think they need to be reflected. I'm sure there will be.
There'll be increase in utilities, something else. Much larger facility, much more modern.
Again, you're probably right. The same with the high school here.
Well, when we found it, we had a high school.
There's a lot of efficiencies, but overall, because of the amount of electricity required, there was an increase.
I just think that we need to reflect that. The only other thing I commented on was, in our stormwater utility budget, we had a, our early discussions about that, where we were gonna try to focus stormwater utility programs and budgets on things that were MS4 requirements. And there's some things in there that, you know, I don't know. I guess you can put things anywhere when you're in the DPW budget, but things like street sweeping are gonna occur whether there's an MS4 requirement or not. Is that really a stormwater, I mean, you can argue that it is, but...
I think that's one of the more important ones.
It is, yeah.
Because if it's not swept, it ends up down in the...
But we were gonna do it anyway. I mean, we're just trying to build it off to a utility, a stormwater utility, instead of the DPW. I mean, we've swept streets in this town for 40 years I've lived here. So it's not like it's something new that's come on into existence because of the stormwater utility. Again, I, you know, it's not a lot of money, although I guess it is. It's $40,000. So. Anyway, just something to consider, you know, how we allocate things to different components of the DPW. I also should acknowledge, I'd asked Paul for a breakdown of the overall DPW budget. I appreciate that, Paul. Mark, if you want that, it's a, how do you put the, as a DPW, as an overall super department, and then break it down into its roads and water department and sewer department and building maintenance and grounds maintenance, so all that, so it all totals up towards a DPW is, but...
Yeah. Would you mind sharing that?
No, it's balls.
Would you guys like questions in advance over our upcoming meetings, if we can get them to you?
If you have them, it would be easier to address. Again, I think Lynn is planning on having some department heads before you folks.
When is it, when is our next scheduled budget, Lynn?
So you have, yeah, Monday, the 9th. You have budget hearings with the departments. I hadn't heard yet if you had specific ones you wanted to hear from, so I made a list. Just a suggestion, if you wanna add any or take any off, but I would like to be able to notify them of some schedule. They're all saving the date right now, but I can't imagine you wanna hear from everyone. Maybe you do. And then you have your public budget forum on the 11th.
On the 11th, yeah. So this is the March 9th, so you would like something by maybe Thursday at the latest this week?
Thursday would be good. I mean, if you have them, just send them as you get them. Even if we get them over the weekend, it will still give us the following Monday to address them. You know, earlier the better. But again, if you think of something over next weekend, please ask us to send it.
Okay, so if anybody has anything, get it into them. Take it straight into them. You might wanna, I know, you guys CC us back, and so we don't get an open meeting situation going, okay? Let us know what the general questions are coming in.
Sure.
Okay, any other, how about it, folks? Anything else?
Okay, Lynn, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to just make sure people are aware, there is a budget forum on March 11th at 7:30 here in this room. And all the documents, again, are on the website. And when you have a minute, if you can look at that suggested schedule and just let me know if that works for you.
If there's anybody else you want to forward here.
Rich, my understanding of the budget forum is on the 11th, is that that is being conducted as a joint meeting based on the requirement that the Finance Committee and the Select Board are both to hold it?
I think that one normally is a joint.
I think this may be the first time.
Well, I thought, I thought when I was chair, we had joint meetings with you guys.
Well, that would have been before my time.
Yeah. Seems like it was before my time, too, sometimes. Yeah. It may have been in schools. Paul, wasn't it Finance that we had?
I think it was before my time, Rich.
Oh, yes. Okay. I tell you, you can't depend on interim chairs. You just can't do it, you know? Okay, anything else? Nothing else from the group? Okay, good. Oh, you did mention this is all available, once again, for people at home. Bring up your internet, go onto the website. You can find all of these, you can find a lot more documents than you saw shown here tonight. You'll get the detailed budget documents. They're all online. Okay, we're gonna move on to the zoning bylaw amendment thing. Lynn, you're gonna have to help me on that. Are we, you had discussions with Marie. Is this more of a walk and talk, or are we gonna vote on these?
Let me just pull this up. Give me one second. Okay, these, so I wanted you to at least have an opportunity to hear about this and have some conversation. These came to be at a planning zoning task force discussing, not quite a formal task force, but we had a working group to talk about bylaw changes in early February. The Planning Board brought you forward a bunch at your last meeting. And then these ones were ones that they didn't necessarily spend time to bring forward, but in speaking with the Building Commissioner, this is something that he deals with quite often and felt that the change would benefit the residents. And it's just something that he's been dealing with more frequently. So especially, there's been some fires or loss of structures. And when he's looking to help them with their rebuilding, the zoning bylaws were not conducive to letting them do what they needed to. And also, it's brought up some issues with financing of homes. When banks call and they're about to mortgage a property, they want to make sure that that property can be rebuilt. And in some cases, our zoning actually wouldn't allow it, because it was a pre-existing, non-conforming property. So, let's see.
So did he sign the support of the ZBA as well as the Building Commissioner, Lynn?
They have reviewed, a member was at that working group meeting. They reviewed it. We had a conversation about it. They hadn't seen the exact language here yet. But they understood the gist of what Paul was trying to change. I can certainly send it to them. And we would need to have the zoning, or have the Planning Board hold a public hearing on this, anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask. Plan and saw it yet?
Not yet. They were also at that meeting, a representative was.
So I guess then this is just information. At this point, you're getting ready to send it on down the road?
Yes.
Unless somebody hears squawks?
Right. And my goal will be to put this in your, in a warrant you'll be signing next, you're in a formal meeting, yeah.
You're gonna have time to get it through all the regulatory steps before you get on the law?
I understand it doesn't need to go through all those steps to get on the warrant. It just has to before town meeting.
Right. You just have to have public hearings before town meeting, not before it's on the law.
Okay.
And Paul did provide a summary at the bottom, and I can read that if you'd like, that as presently written, these bylaws do not allow for a detached garage to supplement, I'm sorry, this is the explanation for the garage one. They do not allow for attached garage to supplement an existing, like, facility. A three-car garage is allowed by right in the bylaws. It does not seem fair that a resident with a small one-car garage cannot build a detached two-car garage, so the total space would be three, as long as it meets the requirements for location and setbacks. So the difference there was whether it was detached or attached, you couldn't do a detached garage, even if you were under the allowable spaces. And he's provided a similar summary for any structure that was destroyed. So in reading those sections as they were written, currently, if a non-conforming building was destroyed to an extent of over 50 percent, the building could not be rebuilt as a non-conforming building. A big percentage of the homes in Long Meadow are non-conforming due to the lack of frontage, lot size, or proximity to lot lines. Banks and other lenders question this bylaw regularly and are reluctant to loan money on such properties.
Any questions?
No, no questions. I think this is probably long overdue.
Yeah, as long as I can. Okay. So no action required on our part?
No.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna skip any other discussion? No other discussion on these? Okay, I'm gonna skip the crumbling foundation and jump down to the warrant? Okay, I'm going to skip the crumbling foundation and jump down to the warrant. As soon as we can get our computers equipped around here. And this is the warrant as it stands right now? And the action that you're requiring tonight?
I guess if you want to bless a few of them, that would be great. We can, or have questions on any of them, we can try to address them. Some of those that are highlighted are moving numbers. We don't actually have the final numbers yet. We will put in our best guess by the 16th, when you would actually vote on it. As an example, snow and ice, we have a very little deficit right now. We're just putting in kind of a placeholder in case we do get a March snowstorm between now and, let's say, two weeks from now. You know, the legal expenses is something we can discuss, of how much additional money we think we might need for our legal councils with the DPW and Tennessee gas pipeline. So, there are, again, there are a number of them are kind of, like I said, moving targets.
The only reservation that I have on voting on any of this tonight is we're a weak board on these three hundred decisions.
Yeah, that's fine. Maybe if you had questions, we can try to tighten it up.
I think we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I think I emailed you.
And those will be included in the next draft. Mark, you emailed, we added the thing about the ambulance, we added data about the ambulance, we added data about, it happens to be Article 33 about the warrant, and there were a couple other comments that we'll try to get in here also. There were about five different ones. They're not in the, they are not in the version that you have here. They were actually just input earlier today.
Yeah, just for record, I asked in Article 20 about the new ambulance, that would include the age and mileage of the ambulance being replaced in the explanation. I guess, and I tried to put together, since Article 33 is something I suggested, I tried to put together justification for it, we'll see how that flies with justification. I suggested Article 35, which shows adjustments to one of the sections of bylaws that either show a markup or show the existing section 2-805 for comparison. But the two questions I have is, on Article 24, which is community preservation funding, you know, they're looking for a raise and appropriate.
It's raise and appropriate, but it's raise and appropriate from the community preservation local surcharge. So, we're actually taking it out of their fund. It's not raise and appropriate from taxation.
Well, that's what, I guess I missed that. Okay, so it does, it already says that raise and appropriate from the...
Right, it's the same terminology, but later on it says from community preservation local surcharge.
Okay, and the other one is in Article 38, Paul. Down, way down there, it says add eight, and I have no clue.
Yeah, we're going to have to follow up on that one. I think that one was submitted by, to somebody, it must be somebody on the zoning. So, we're going to have to follow up our planning boards, but we'd have to follow up on that.
Okay, so we're going to try to just clarify that?
Right, absolutely.
In Article 38, number one, it says add eight to Article 15, and I have no idea what that is, so...
If you want, Mark, I can give you a...
No, no, as long as you got it on your list, Paul, and we'll get it sorted out, that's fine. I just think if it went to a town meeting in that kind of format, people...
Yeah, I agree. Just on the ambulance, just in FYI, Medic 3 is a 2005 medium-duty ambulance with 131,000 miles, and then this will be written in the next version with 20,400 hours of service. Comparatively, Medic 1 has just over 2,600 hours of service, and Medic 2 has 8,300 hours of service. Both Medic 1 and 2 are heavy-duty chassis also, as opposed to the medium.
Right, we went to that bigger F-350 or whatever.
So, there's a substantial difference in the hours of, hours of service.
Yeah, ask. You're talking three ambulances?
Yes.
Well, you said that rather quickly, didn't you? So, we've gone from, we've gone from one ambulance with a backup to now wanting three full-time ambulances?
Not necessarily three full-time ambulances, but they have the demand to sometimes utilize three, as opposed to outsourcing that third call.
I have a, I have a need for more money, too, but I don't get it.
Did you ask for it?
Yes, I repeatedly do, every day. Yeah, well, we won't get into discussion now, but I'm sure that discussion will come up, because this is, this is a never-ending multiplying thing that's taking place on the ambulance service. As you all know, Paul, we've all been here about the same amount of time. And, you know, you get another ambulance, now you're asking for more staffing for the other ambulances, and there's a certain point where, you know, it's just...
The chief will be here, but again, I think it's, I don't say it goes hand-in-hand. They currently have three now.
Yeah, but the third one should have been gotten rid of. They kept it.
They kept it because it was still usable.
Yeah, I know, but if it was, we shouldn't have replaced it. Okay, if we're still really using it, and of course, Lynn, you weren't here when all this took place, but this goes back quite a ways, Mark, it goes back quite a ways on you, too, on capital. This is, this is something that seems to be morphing larger and larger and larger in when we're in a situation where this diminishing return. I mean, you're asking for additional funds for physicians and then increasing in ambulances, and it's supposed to be an enterprise-type service, so I guess I'm a little bit concerned.
It is all coming out of ambulance revenue, so none of it is coming out of general taxation.
The people aren't.
No, the people, yes, they are.
Yeah, well, it's, okay, we won't, we won't get into it now, but you know, the other thing, too, I guess the question is, you keep escalating and building something on, in a vacuum, where we have significant problems in our town financially, looking in the future, and yet we're beefing up like this and going in that direction with more and more staff and more and more ambulances. And these are services that are readily available. It's just that we choose, we don't want other vendors coming. I guess there's a lot of questions that can be asked on this, and maybe I'm the only one that ever asks them.
And, you know, again, I think a lot of them, the chief will have, we can prep him on the data for the number of runs that he has and things like that for, to try to answer your questions.
But it, okay. Okay, we'll leave it. We'll leave it until our next meeting.
Fair enough.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I will, and I do, I just don't, if we're not going to do it, we'll save them.
Yeah, I hate that Mark even got into that, because I wish you hadn't even mentioned that part on the warrant. We were trying to let it slip right past real easy time. But we haven't approved the warrant anyways, just we don't have a full board to prepare on it.
Right, right. These are all drafts.
Now, when does the warrant have to be finished for you guys?
16th was the date that it was on the budget calendar to be completed by.
Okay. So, this has to be wrapped up pretty quick.
Right, I think you have three meetings, three-night meeting scheduled for next week. So, between the budget and the warrant, hopefully, can all be done in those three meetings.
Right, okay.
Rich, the bigger question for me is, you know, the adjustments to this, to the budget basics or assumptions, for example, capital 3.125 instead of 3.25, the OPEB contract, you know, are we all okay with that? Because if we're not, to go into a full-fledged budget review with, and change the basics is a lot more than tweaking some line items. And I think, you know, personally, I'm okay with it, and so I'm not out here doing something, but I think that if we have, even though there are only three of us, if we have major objections to those basics that were used, we ought to let them know now, rather than wait until we're down in the, in the details and, you know, with a deadline staring us in the face.
Do you have any opinions? I don't have any opinions that I want to share. I haven't, you know, we just got the presentation, Mark, so we need a little bit of time to absorb and, you know, think about all the information we've got. And it's, say, we are a weak board tonight, so I, do you have any feelings that you'd like to share?
No, mine were that, you know, reducing, reducing, only increasing is a better way of, only increasing our cash flow expenditure to 3.125% of available funds, instead of the...
3.25.
Instead of 3.25, that was our policy, if you will, or our goal, is a better way to put it. I'm okay with that because of what that's allowed us to do. Also, because I looked at the capital plan and didn't see anything else other than more of the same thing, but didn't see anything specific that I thought got shorted because of that change. So, for example, that's, I'm okay with that 3.125%. The same thing with the, with the change in our OPEB funding. Only increasing it most of, but not the entire way that we had hoped to do it.
Yeah, I figured you'd be happy with that.
Well, you're right.
You're going the direction you like to see them go.
No, I...
So, I'm going to hold, I'm going to hold off on my comments until we get the whole group together, so, but I know, I know how you're feeling, and they're not going to change.
Right.
You're happy.
No, but I, but my concern is that if, if we come back, you know, in a week and say it's got to be 3.5%, we better have some suggestions on where to get that extra, or 3.25%. We better come back with some suggestions on how to, where to cut to get that one.
That's when we would.
Okay.
You know, that would be designed, because we weren't going to want to give them those depth of discussions tonight with a weak board, and it wasn't Marie's intention to have the board doing it tonight, anyway. It was just a presentation to sort of open the appetite. And we've pretty well had that discussion several times, and we know there's a lot of split feelings on those particular things, so, and it's part of a larger discussion, a much larger discussion.
On the capital, just let me add that the, we're using $5,000 from the capital stabilization fund, and it does have a balance of $59,000. So, there's still $54,000 that if there's something else you folks wanted to add into capital, that money is still available. It's not a lot of money, but again, it's another 50 grand.
And does that get replenished year over year? How does that work?
Basically, it gets replenished by projects being completed with excess funds available, that they are closed out into the capital stabilization fund.
Okay, I do have a, I do have a question. I think Mark and I were chatting a little bit about it. Are we generating brand-new money into the capital program every year in the full amount that's supposed to be allocated, and then reintroducing all of the overestimate money in addition to that?
Let me answer the second part of that first. Any excess money that's available after the project is done, or if it's abandoned, goes back to the capital stabilization fund. I think that answers the second part of your question, if I'm correct in understanding.
That's a piece of the second part, yes.
Right. Now, the other part of the question is, are we fully putting money in there? That if you looked at our net revenues, and by net, I mean exclusive of the debt exclusion amount, which I think we've had discussion and modified the policy in a prior year, and we've also not raised $300,000 in levy. So, when you take out what we're actually going to receive in operating revenues, that does equal to 3.125%. So, does that fully meet what you folks had wanted? You originally started off with 3.25%.
So, Paul, maybe I can try to get in the middle here, so, but we have said that we want to allocate from tax revenue, whether it's 3.25% or 3, and that's a dollar figure, okay? And I'm not sure what that dollar figure was this year, but, no, what's 3.25% of our expected revenue?
Let me find my... Yeah, $1,954,770.
Okay, so, we have, that's $1,954,770, okay?
Yes.
But we had $54,000 in the, in the pot that had come back from unspent projects?
$59,000.
$59,000, okay.
Yes.
So, the question is, is the capital planning committee told you've got $1,954,770? Or they told you have $1,954,770 plus $59,000? Which is what, I think what Richard's question was.
They were told they had approximately $2 million.
Okay, which is closer to the $1,954 plus $59,000.
Right.
Now, the fact that they have chosen not to fully recommend, or recommend that we fully allocate all that $2 million...
Right.
What was their final recommended price?
It fell short of this. What you have here also is the town manager's recommendation, so there's some slight differences that we need to go over between what the capital planning committee recommended and what Lynn has recommended. There's some slight differences.
How much is the figure? We'll allow him, he hasn't scrambled through all these documents.
The difference?
No, how much is, how much are we going for capital this year?
The warrant, the warrant says $1,929,770 plus...
Plus $25,000. Raise and appropriate and be all that multi-fund.
Right, plus $25,000, so it's...
$1,954,770.
So, it's the new money, not...
It's the new money, not the old money.
It's the new money, plus you have $5,000 coming from old money, from the capital stabilization fund.
Oh, $5,330, that's the...
$5,330, that's from, that's from the capital stabilization fund. That's from the old money that the turnbacks in prior year.
Right, right. So, I guess the, for me, and I'm going to differ from Richard, you know, if, why aren't we using, A, the whole $59,000, not just $5,330, of what was already in the fund, and therefore appropriating $59,000 less than our target, as opposed to leaving $54,000? I mean, leaving $54,000 in that fund, to me, serves no purpose. It's money we're not spending, we're not, and, and it's money we're taxing people to raise to do the same thing that that money would have done.
Certainly, this can be amended by you folks to add whatever project you want. It's a starting point.
But I'm asking, asking you why that was, why that seemed to be the reasonable recommendation, as opposed to tax less and use what you got? Or, or spend the entire amount of money, the new money plus what was left behind?
Okay, hold on, Mark wants to...
Go ahead. Do, do projects come up in the middle of the year that that money could be used for?
There has always been thought of having a capital plan in the fall, which if something does come up, you would have minimally the $54,000, and that between the $59 and the five, plus whatever we close out at the end of this fiscal year. So, you will have a pot of money that is greater than $54,000 in July.
Not knowing what I don't know, I think if, if traditionally projects don't come up, I would tend to agree with Mark, and that we shouldn't be leaving money in there. If it has been a source of money that's been relied upon by departments, I think we should leave it in.
Right, let me, is it that? The history is, many, many, many years ago, it wasn't a skimpy $59,000. It was sometimes $200,000, $300,000. The estimates were so outlandishly crazy, there's no other explanation for it, that this money was coming back to Robin in these large chunks, I mean, $300,000, $400,000, when we had desperate need for maintenance projects, and the estimating was so crazy that the money was held in limbo and then flushed back at the end of the year, and instead of putting it onto the new allocation, she would substitute that part of it for the allocation. And that's why the point was brought up again, that practice has always been a nice practice for somebody if they're putting money away in boxes and keeping it, but it's a terrible practice if you're trying to develop a good facility management program, because our needs could easily be four or five million a year. I mean, we spent $4 million on asphalt alone, so it's not a fact of shortage of projects, it's, it's all the money. Now, I do agree, if that $59,000, if we have logical history that says, yeah, during the year something comes up and we use it, then that's different. But if it's just sitting there, it's not near as much as it used to be under Robin, but it still is 60 grand.
Richard, just a quick correction. Originally, when the money was underspent, it went to the general fund. It was only about 12 or 14 years ago when we started putting into the articles...
True.
To say unspent money returns to the capital stabilization fund. Paul, you remember when we did that?
Yeah, true, true, true.
So, the benefit, the benefit of overestimating your projects was, well, allocate $1 million, spend a half a million dollars, and a half of the money you didn't spend goes back somewhere else. But now it stays, stays in capital, and so, you know, I think we just need to decide, and for example, you know, we have nice round numbers for pavement preservation, for sidewalk replacement. I mean, you know, we put $400,000 in capital for pavement preservation, they estimate what it is, and then they take the bid that says not to, that doesn't exceed $400,000, and you know it always comes in a few thousand dollars less, or a few hundred dollars, whatever it is, when in fact, maybe it'd be okay to say, if it came in a few hundred dollars more, that we could do it. The problem is, you got to appropriate a fixed amount of money, and so, given the fact that you got to... fact that you gotta do that, I, you know, I think we should tax people less and use what we got.
Yeah, what I, I also want to preference one thing, because folks out there listening to this discussion, Mark is taxing you less, but he's gonna get you later. We've seen this game before. The, the whole situation, folks, it's impossible to have a program execute without some type of bounce back, unless it's personnel and you're doing it the same year and year and year. When you're in contracting, there is going to be some problems in the, in the bidding process, there's always gonna be some kind of change, or there's always gonna be something comes in overestimate and underestimate. Because a lot of times, our people, because of the procurement regulations, are unable to get Class A estimates, they have to get a, a good Class B or Class C estimate, so sometimes it's not a, it's not just a mere guess, but it's, it's a very well-educated guess that they're coming in with on cost estimates. So if you've worked in the field, as Mark has, I have, and this gentleman over here, the other Mark has, you understand this money is gonna flush back and forth. So we're not saying that that's wrong, we're just worried about where the money is sitting, and does it get back to the appropriate sums for the next year to be reused? That's, that's the real discussion. And the 59,000, Mark, I think we'll just, he can give it all back to me.
The issue is, as you know, Richard, that, you know, if you get an estimate for $5,000 for, or $25,000 for a project, and it comes in at $25,200.
Right.
We can't do it. So you estimate 25, or $26,000, you know, come in $25,200, and then you can do it, and you have $800 left over. So, you're right, the, the nature of the beast in municipal bidding is, you're gonna overappropriate and have money turned back, and our goal is to hopefully keep that as low as possible, but allow us to continue to do the projects.
And I think we've been fiduciarily very responsible in at least getting the money going back and sitting in capital.
But, but to me, the issue is, if you know you've got $59,000, it does nobody any good sitting there for another year.
Unless, unless they can prove that they need, like, that $25,000 that you have designed in your, your budget, that $25,000 element, that you've proven time after year after year you've used. Unless they can do that, Mark. Other than that, I would agree. Just put, give them another project and get a project done.
And again, I think there's a list that is prioritized that goes beyond the amount of 1,954,000.
But the next item on the list is more than $54,000, is the problem.
I think, well, let me just say that one of the things that is on the capital planning list that is not on this list are the glass intakes over in the high school cabinets. I think it's $47,000.
Good memory. It's limited, tempered glass.
Yeah, yeah. Also, it scares me, too, sometimes when people know those funds are sitting there, projects all of a sudden come forward. Not saying they're not needed, but it's just they get, they get quite creative. Okay.
So, again, I think we look at it, it's a matter of priority, that just because we have X, do we always want to spend X?
Now, see, we've got all of this out of our system before the next meeting.
Okay, that's good.
Okay?
We don't have it all on versus, we have some of it on.
We started, we started to grind a little bit. We ready to move on?
Yeah. I just, do, do you know off the top of your head if, if departments have tapped into that fund?
They can't tap into it unless it's appropriated for projects, that's the nature of the capital stabilization, but it's gotta go to town meeting. But that's what, but we did have a project development line item and a project reserve, but project reserve is $10,000, and that was specifically intended for things like you're over 200 bucks and you can approve it, but there's nothing in here that really is a, what I'll call a project, project-worthy financing on its own, or project-capable financing on its own.
So that's what you're saying, if we might have a fall town meeting, if you want to do a project.
If you want to do a project, if you want to add to this list by the time this, this warrant is finalized, you could do it then, you could wait. Again, it's not going anywhere, it's going to stay in the capital stabilization fund, so it's, it's your choice.
And you do all have the capital docs that were submitted, so if you wanted to, or I can resend that Google Drive, has everything in there if you wanted to take a look.
Ready to move on?
I'm ready if you are.
I am, I'm ready to move on. Let's see, I guess we've got the crumbling foundation issue. I, I asked Marie to put this back on the agenda. Folks out in TV land, there's a, there's an item that you're gonna hear about, and you may have heard some about it already, it's called the crumbling foundation issue. It actually is where the, the foundation on your house starts to, the concrete starts to crumble and fall apart from oxidation internally, minerals in the concrete are actually oxidizing, and it's expanding and the concrete fails. We have one person in town that has already experienced this failure on his foundation, had to have his home actually jacked up off the foundation, replace the entire foundation, it cost, I think, what, $360,000 or some unbelievable price. It's been a major problem in the state of Connecticut for several years. It is a problem in Massachusetts, but it's yet to be defined how great the problem is. It stems from a concrete plant, or a, a batching plant down in Connecticut that was selling concrete from their, from the aggregate being, coming out of their quarry that had this pyrotite, I believe the, the mineral's called. And it's a fairly rare occurrence, it, there's a place in Canada that has it, there's a place in Ireland that has it, there's very few places in the world that has this, this mineral in the gravel deposits that, that actually affects the concrete. So there was a task force put together by Senator Gobi and Brian Ash, our representative, and they studied this issue. They brought together about 15, 20 people, and they, they put about a 50-page study out. And they are going to have a meeting coming up on, on this issue, where they're gonna go into great detail on the analysis of this, and they're gonna be talking about the impact for the different communities and where they feel the homes are, and the, the dates of service, et cetera. If, if you're interested, you might want to put this on your calendar to attend. This is especially important if your home was built between 1983 and 2016. This is when it was known for sure that this concrete plant was operational, and this concrete was being shipped into some areas. Not every home, not every home addition used this concrete, but there are some developments, apparently, in East Long Meadow and some of the other communities, were exclusively built with concrete from this facility. So they're going to have a major impact on their budget for, as years go by, for the people with the homes, and also for the, the abatements that are gonna take place. So the state of Connecticut has been, they're way ahead of us, they've got federal, or not federal, they've got state funds set up where they're helping people abate their homes, they're doing the studies, and, and we are just starting to get up to speed. This report is going to be provided at public forum, and it's gonna be Saturday, March 14th, 2020, at the Granite Valley Middle School Auditorium, no pun on that granite, but that's where it's gonna be, 21 Thompson Street at Munson, Mass, and it's going to be from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We're hoping it's gonna be a good turnout. I know the town of Long Meadow, or East Long Meadow, just had this issue come up at their council meeting, this last council meeting, and they had some representatives in there talking about it. The issue is very significant if you happen to be one of the people that has the bad concrete. If you don't, it has no impact on you whatsoever. You do need to be relatively an expert to determine this 100% by testing, or if you go out and you look at your foundation on your home and it's just crumbly and turning to dust, you pretty well have a major problem. The unfortunate thing, when I was talking to Russ DePree, apparently, in the state of Connecticut, this quarry operation has been banned from selling concrete to residential customers, but it has not been banned on selling them to commercial customers. We're not quite sure what the differential there is, other than they may have found a, a certain mix on commercial properties where they get a stronger PSI concrete that, that wards this off. Unfortunately, there is a belief, and I, I was unable to verify it, that this, this company has, has been shut down, but it is reopened. And apparently, it, it's rumored, and it's more than rumored, it's just a matter of proven, that the concrete is being shipped back up into our state by the same quarry being used in residential applications. Connecticut has banned it being used in residential. To this point, it is, nothing's been done in our area to ban it. As part of the recommendations that came down on this study, there was actually 10 different recommendations being brought forward on these, from the special commission. I will not go into all of them, but if you're interested, this information is on the town website. Where, where exactly is it, Lynn?
Select Board Town Manager page, under Reports and Studies.
Okay, so go ahead and read it over, it, it's very informative. It's, it's a very odd situation we're in, it's like, don't ask, don't tell, because people, some people don't want to know if they have the foundation problems, but yet if, if you have a bad foundation and a potential new buyer finds out that you got a bad foundation, you're not selling that house for what you're asking. It's just not gonna go, because the word is spreading, it's, it's getting more and more common now that people are asking for foundations to be inspected. So, this is developing, you're gonna hear a lot more about it, you've already heard quite a bit about it, but we're rather slow in the state getting this program fully, fully implemented, so, that's all I'm gonna say about it tonight, but if you do have a chance, you want to attend this meeting, this being sponsored where they're gonna brief this, there'd be a lot of good public information come out of it. And if you do have any questions on this, please get in touch with our building inspector, I imagine it's good contacts, is that right? Yeah, call Paul Healy, our building inspector, he's, he's pretty well up to speed on this issue, he's been at some of the meetings also. Or you can reach out to select board or reach out to the town manager. Anything from you guys?
Negative.
Okay. I think we've about finished up. Our next meeting is going to be next Monday? Is that a 7 o'clock start time?
Yes.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, next Monday, we're gonna start into our budget-run meetings. I think we have, what, three meetings scheduled next week?
Two.
Two?
The third was a, if you needed an overflow night, but as of now, doesn't look like it.
Okay, so we have two meetings scheduled next week, and our schedule is on the, on the website. Anybody have anything else to add?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any opposition? All in favor? Good night, ladies and gentlemen, and have a nice evening.